You're watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www-allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course we have our updated schedule there. Or feel free to call us at 354-2295. For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting, February 18th, 2013. Come to the order, please.
Ayler?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone had their opportunity to read the minutes from February 14th in a regular session and pro-session. No changes to that file. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. It's the only time during the city council meeting that citizens are allowed to address council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records.
Yes, my name is Chuck Vinckuski, I live at 615 A Street, and I have a question for council. This question has been raised about three months ago, and I have not heard a answer yet on it. There was a question asked about possibly shooting bow and arrow inside the city resident or inside the city, and I have not heard a response to it, and I've been here since October meeting. I'd like to know why I haven't heard a response to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, sir. The consent agenda this evening is only bills to be allowed. Okay, motion to approve those?
No.
Sir?
Go, please.
Nielsen?
Here.
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Ayler?
Yes.
Okay, and report officers, we have treasurer's report July 1st, 2012 to January 31st, 2013.
I don't have too much to report since I think I just talked about this last meeting, but January puts us at about 58% of where we should be on our budget. The general fund is at 77.97. As usual, I tell you that it's mostly because of property taxes. Expenses are at 52.95. That's what we want to see, revenue over what we want and expenses under what we projected. The area we're really watching to are the water and sewer funds, especially the water fund. The water fund is only at 48% of revenue and 57% of expenditures, and it's also incurring that monthly cost of the new meter replacements. But as soon as we look for, you know, as soon as we see that difference hopefully catch up as far as the revenue we're bringing in that will pay for those monthly expenses, then hopefully we'll gain some ground in that area. But we are watching that closely.
Because this is just a January.
This is just January, yeah, so we got a little ways to go.
We haven't even had a cycle. No one's gotten their bill with a new meter yet, have they?
Yes.
Oh, there has been a run?
Yes.
Because I was in the last cycle, so I haven't gotten it.
Is there any questions on any of this?
Are we reading the mirrors electronically?
I don't know, is Mike in the audience, or, oh, there he is.
Sorry, Mike.
I know they love this new software.
Actually, the one question that the mayor asked as far as bills with the new meters, we have one cycle that's going out. That was actually the first one, first row, group of rows that were built, and they were the 120-day period.
That's right.
Bill, that first one. This next bill that just went out that we've collected the revenue from, that was about a 65-day bill. And actually, the revenue has increased even based on that 65-day cycle. The next group of routes that are going to be billed will be for an entire 90-day cycle. So we should get a better idea, a better fair comparison of where we would be. I just want to say that initially it looks like it's going to be very positive. And I'm very encouraged, and we are reading them electronically. The power company is not reading any meters any longer. So we're excited with the capabilities that it gives us, and I think it's going to be a very good project.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Can I receive the file?
Receive the file, and then, treasurer's.
Hubble.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Ayler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a couple of documents on the city manager search that our consultant had sent in. They're in order of the advertisement being first. So we'll go, we'll do that first. There's an ad, and basically the ad is an advertisement that our consultant is going to put online and on the websites that pertain to city manager recruitment. And there was some questions earlier about that. He'll basically take any input. I doubt he wants to completely revise the entire thing by tomorrow, but he is basically standing by to make any revisions that we would like, so. I don't know if, what would be appropriate, if you want me to read the whole thing? It was, it was online for anyone to read, I don't know, depends on how you guys feel. Does he read it?
I don't think that has to be.
Okay.
Was the council also?
No, I just have a quick suggestion, but I don't think you need to read it.
Okay.
On the, on the ad, in that second paragraph at the beginning, it says, "With such employers as Alpine Regional Medical Center Lafarge and the world headquarters of Vester, Alpena offers great opportunity." I don't know if that's misleading, and that I don't think Vester's going to hire people or hasn't hired, and kind of like, you know, I don't know if that gives the impression that that's an employer that's going to have job opportunities, because it doesn't seem like they do. But, you know, I mean, that's relatively minor, minor thing anyway. But I don't see anything else in there that I wouldn't be proud to put out there, and seems pretty accurate.
Is it just talk on Vester? I heard that their Holland plant or whatever shut down, and they're going to be calling the guys back, or?
I have no idea.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know where he, when he took his data to put this, to put this ad in. I don't know if he went online or if he talked to anybody specifically about what's in here.
He did not talk to me, did he?
I just kind of looked your way, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I have not.
Yeah, so where, why, why and how he chose the few companies that he did, I don't, and I don't think it's outside of our realm. I mean, we all live here and know what's available if we want to take that, have him take that out, or if we want to have him replace it with something else. He does mention a few things like the Thunder Bay National Marine Sanctuary later in it, but as far as, it is a bit odd, "With such employers as the Alpena Medical Center, Lafarge and the world headquarters of Vester Company, Alpena offers a great opportunity for those who plan to visit, work, or retire in northeast Michigan." So it was probably at one time a bigger draw for interest than it is now, if you guys want to have.
I don't think, probably mattered too much either way, isn't it? My only other question is, the salary that's down there, if that's printed, is that set in stone, is the average manager, the size of town, get paid that much?
See, yeah.
14 million Americans out of work. Is there 100,000 people qualified that would work for less? And, you know, if we put that out there, and then the people came and interviewed, and he said, "Well, we're going to pay 80," we decided as, you know what I mean?
Well, to answer your first question, that's not set in stone. So that, I think that number basically just came because that was a salary that we had, that we had paid already. There was, there was already talk earlier about, about having a lower end on that, rather than 90 to 100, having a lower end, whether anybody's comfortable going as low as 80, or?
No, I just threw that number out there, I, you know, that's granted, you know, but I was just kind of wondering about that.
You can always go up. If a person performs miracles, you can always go up.
Right. Yeah, so I don't have an issue with that, I don't know how.
The only thing I would say is if you put 90, it's a difficult thing to then go back and say, "We're offering you 80." If you put a range, that's what they're going to be expecting the salary to fall with, and not, not, especially less. Just for many.
Can we just kind of do the salaries commensurate with experience and qualification, and not put a number on it?
That's also done. For some, that's fine, others, some others like to know the range only because is it something worth them putting the effort into applying for it if it's something that for whatever reason is not within their range that they're looking at?
Well, if we're going to put a number on it, then we ought to be in agreement, so we don't put a number on it and then debate it later.
Yeah. Yeah, because we wouldn't be able to meet again.
Yeah, that's my thing. I mean, you know, it costs more to live in Detroit and Chicago and stuff, so I don't know. I would rather throw something else in there and argue the point later.
Because anybody would be, I mean, any, any professional that's a candidate would know that they could easily, it's public information as far as what anybody here that works for the city is making, they could easily look and see. I wouldn't dispute putting in, putting the salary commensurate with experience level rather than putting a number at all. I don't know if Frank would be comfortable with that. He is, he is the consultant, but, so if we are comfortable with not putting a number in at all?
I would just hate to see somebody come here, and if we decided to change it, then tell them, "Yeah, we'll hire you, but you've got to take a pay cut."
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, it's kind of a tough thing to, no, so I'd rather do the experience thing.
All right, why don't I do that?
Everything else on the matter I'd like.
One thing we were looking towards is for admin was not to be in the defined benefit program anymore for new hires. And we had said it included the city manager when, with the past city manager, but I don't know if that's something that, again, you'd have to negotiate.
Right.
It doesn't say that in here, right?
No.
Right.
Yeah. If that's, that's generic enough.
Someone did make a mention, make mention that we do not have skiing. Well, it's misleading that we have skiing.
We have cross-country skiing.
If we put cross-country in there, I think it might be.
Bike paths and stuff.
So if he's going to make, if he's going to make a couple changes, we might as well fix that as well.
And then Bill just had a typo, there was a typo in the second paragraph in the middle that says in 2007, Alpena was ranked on the hottest, and it should be one of the hottest retirement destinations.
Ah, okay.
You know, you get picky, there shouldn't be a comment for 2007, I think. I didn't think we were going to get that picky. But Bill's going to call something out.
I would just assume be grammatically correct, this is going to be all over the place.
It shouldn't be.
I just wanted to be able to say something else, sitting up here, so.
I have a couple others, if anybody's ready to. The next sentence says, "Just last year, the Weather Channel named Alpena as one of the most scenic drives in the Midwest." I don't believe Alpena is a drive or a scenic drive, it's a city. Was it not US 23 was one of the scenic drives?
What was it technically?
It wasn't Alpena.
Yeah, I think it said the Heritage Route, US 23 was the, was deemed one.
Which does go through Alpena.
Yeah. Also, where they talk about the glass-bottom boat, it says, "Take a tour of nearly 200 historic shipwrecks." I would be sick of it after 40 or 50. I think the boat stops at some of the shipwrecks, right?
Yeah, maybe six or 10, I'm not sure, but it's nowhere near.
The launch goes back to town for those who.
How do you, how do you want to reword that?
I would just say some of the nearly 200.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, that's not a long shipwreck.
That sounds like a long tour. So do you agree that we should do, are you talking for the scenic tour, or should we just, should we just have him pull that whole sentence?
No, I think that's important, but I think we ought to be correct.
Have him more correct with that? I can easily look it up and.
You could say the Weather Channel named US 23, which runs through Alpena, is one of the most scenic drives in the Midwest.
Where it runs through Columbus, Ohio, it's not so scenic. It's the main street of Columbus, Ohio.
Not scenic, it's just not a thing. Just keep going in and circle.
It's part of the university. On the employers, I don't know if we want to add any others. Take your point about Vester, do we want to mention the college or the public schools? Or is DPI panel? How many do we want to put in there? I just like bring it up, I'm all right with the way it stands.
It does mention Alpena Community College, though.
Yeah, above. It's a touching sentence, because who's hiring these days?
You could just start, "Alpena offers great opportunity for those who plan to visit," and leave off the names.
Just leave them off.
Because you're going to miss somebody.
Why don't I just ask him if he can just reword that part without specific businesses altogether?
Man, I guess you'll get back to him tonight then, probably, or tomorrow?
I'll probably email him this evening when I get home. And I will basically just copy everyone, so everyone is completely aware of what I, how I established my notes here. He'll get back to me, I'm sure, either this evening or tomorrow.
Leaving Alpena Regional Medical Center in. To kind of show that, you know, that we do have state-of-the-art medical center, I kind of would leave that, I mean, that whole school of employees, just kind of maybe reword.
Yeah. Okay. Possibly add the school system. All right.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. And then the proposed timeline is basically, it was pretty close to what he had suggested before, but it was off a little bit. I went back into the minutes of the meeting where he had sent it before, and it had changed just a little bit, but the end result was about the same as far as date-wise. I think he just pushed everything back a little bit, just for weather, for April, for anybody traveling up here in the month of April rather than March. Does anybody have any issues whatsoever with his timeline?
No, as he said, it's consistent with over 20 searches that he's done, and I think we can trust him on the timeline a little bit.
Yeah. All right.
Do we need any kind of action?
So I don't know if we need any kind of action, or if it was just, if it was just, this was just a review and correction. So if that's, with that said, we'll pop down to C. We have a legal opinion on the city representation on the Chamber of Commerce Board. From Bill?
This memorandum is quite lengthy, so I will try to not spend the whole evening here reading it into the record, but there are some points I'd like to make out of it. As council's aware, issue arose at the last meeting, or preceding the last meeting, and I gave an opinion at that time that I wanted a little bit more time to look at and put in writing, so that there was no misunderstanding about my opinion. But also, Sean had raised a good point about the Chamber of Commerce being a member of another alliance, and that other alliance essentially promoted the lobbying of not only state officials, but local elected officials as well. So I wanted to take a look at whether that would in and of itself create a conflict. The city has a council policy statement, it's Policy Statement Number 50, and it's titled Ethical Standards of Conduct for Elected Officials. That's also several pages long, and without reading that into the record either, that's available on the website as well. But as a general rule, most conflicts that arise for elected officials arise in a financial aspect. More times than not, that's where a conflict would occur. Where somebody either has essentially a business interest outside of the scope of their elected duties that would come before council, that would create a potential conflict. Another common area of potential conflicts is when somebody has a close personal association with somebody who appears before council and is asking either for some type of contractual consideration or some type of consideration that the general citizen rate would not otherwise be afforded. Those are the main two areas where you're going to see conflicts for elected officials. But this lays out that there are several different things, and it talks about that might result in or create the appearance of any of these. And the, create the appearance is the one that causes more problems for elected officials in the actual conflict. Usually you can see the actual conflict coming, you know, you were a member of this business, this business is coming before the board, actual conflict, there's, you know, no debate about that. Another one would be, for instance, a family member. You know, family members coming before the board, or your close personal associate, friend, something where you can clearly see it. The appearance of impropriety is obviously much more difficult, and the law is not entirely clear on what that is. The most recent Michigan decisions that have been reported talk about getting away from the standard of appearance of impropriety, because what I see and what you see may not be the same as far as the appearance. And it really goes back to, is there some actual bias or prejudice that may occur by virtue of this elected official having a status matter? So most policy statements carry that language, but the law really supports people getting off things when there's an actual conflict, not just, just when there's an appearance of one. When there is an appearance of one, though, that's where, you know, the elected official's discretion has to come in, and, you know, in a sense you have to make a choice, is this a bad idea for me to do this? Or is this conflictual for me to do this? Sometimes it's a bad idea to do something, but it's not an actual conflict. But it may have some repercussions, and, you know, if you know going in that it's maybe not the best idea, and you do it, and you have the repercussions, then, you know, you're all subject to the vote of the people, and, you know, sometimes, as we've seen recently, you know, recalls happen for certain reasons, and, you know, and people get put out of their position because even though there may not have been something actually inappropriate, it may have been the appearance of that, and it creates issues. So the appearance standard is not the actual standard, okay? And I wanted to point that out clearly, so that everybody knows that just because there's an appearance of something doesn't mean it's automatically a conflict. The policy statement goes on, though, and establishes actual conflicts, and that goes along the lines of the self-interest, requires you to disclose certain things. A dual employment or dual representation situation would also be an actual conflict. You couldn't do any of those, okay? Section five, section five also provides some prohibited conduct and sets forth a list of things where council members are simply prohibited from engaging in certain activity. Number one is probably the most easiest one to understand, and that's divulging any confidential information on behalf of the city, obviously, if any of you did that, that, you know, that would create some problems. Section six provides for public disclosure and states that whenever a council member feels that there's a potential, or not potential conflict, excuse me, an actual conflict, he has to identify that on the record, and really, the rest of council has to vote as to whether that individual should hear it. We haven't always followed that policy, unfortunately, but I wanted to bring it to the attention of council because we need to follow that more strictly. There have been times in the past where council members have recused themselves, and even though council, other members may have known why they were accusing themselves, it wasn't stated publicly on the record. So we got to be careful that we state it publicly on the record and that a vote is taken on somebody recusing themselves. Section eight goes on to provide that when any council member requests so, the Attorney General shall provide an advisory opinion. And one of the things that kind of occurred in this particular situation was Sean essentially had made that request. I'm not sure if he made the request knowing that the council policy called for it, if he just made.
Sure, I did.
Yeah. Just made the request essentially along the lines of good idea, bad idea. But certainly, for any council member, if you have questions in the future about whether some action that you're taking outside of your official duties or an action you're taking inside your official duties is conflictual in nature, the policy does call for asking myself for a formal advisory opinion. Moving on to the meat of it, I don't see anything in this particular situation in terms of Matt serving on the Alpena Area Chamber of Commerce Board that creates an actual conflict. So it's my legal position that he can sit on that board. Is there a potential conflict? Absolutely, there's a potential conflict for any of you sitting on any of these different boards that you sit on, whether they be city boards or private organization boards, and that conflict goes back to those six or seven things that are listed earlier in the policy. If you end up having an actual conflict, you got to, you got to refrain from voting on that particular issue. Another thing that the policy makes clear is that whenever any council member sits on any of these boards, the council member must be careful and must clearly equivocate what the position is. So that particular individual cannot speak on behalf of the city if the city hasn't spoken on the issue. And he must make clear that even though you may be on that, on that particular board, and your position is either a City of Alpena position, or you may, in this particular case, be put on as a public sector member, you can't represent the City of Alpena's position unless you've been authorized by the City of Alpena to represent that position. So you must make clear, if you're given an opinion while serving on any of these boards, that that opinion is your individual opinion, unless council has essentially voted and told you you could go to that particular board and make the position of the city known clear. The other thing that I'm suggesting in the memo is that council can amend its policy if it wishes to do so. And it could amend the policy to say that if any of you sit on any outside board or commission, regardless of how you're placed on that, that you bring that to the attention. regardless of how you're placed on that, that you bring that to the attention of the council or bring it to the attention of the city manager and myself and ask for an opinion as to whether it may create a problem. And, you know, if you want to do that, then if that was the consensus of council, I can draft a policy that would essentially say that. Now, with that being said, we have to be careful in that regard that we would not be infringing on any of your individual private rights as well. There are certain boards that any of you could sit on that may not be conflictual in nature and may not have any potential, um, conflict in the future, and I would hate for council to be restricting somebody's access to one of these other boards just because they don't like the particular organization. And I'm not suggesting that council would do that, but it's a slippery slope. Once you shut somebody down on one, then it may tend to be, uh, that we want to shut everybody down on everything. You know, you didn't want me to be on the last board, so I don't want you to be on the next board. And I laid out just a couple of examples of boards, and I didn't lay those out for any particular reason, but just as a couple of examples. There are many others. Just one that, I guess that would be sports related that I can think of off my head. Let's assume you were asked to be on the, um, the Alpena Jets football board. I can't imagine that there would be any specific conflict in arising on that, on that board, but as I say that, I can see the Alpena Jets football, uh, board coming up here next year maybe and asking for some funding or asking for the use of a field or something, so, you know, you can't necessarily imagine upfront that there'd be conflicts, but there could be potential conflicts, and if they arose, then you would, you would handle them in that way. But for council to upfront expect that there might be a conflict and restrict anybody's access to that particular board would not be wise. I mean, whatever you would do as a policy would have to, would have to be legal and would have to be constitutional, so we don't want to get in a situation where we're restricting access to boards when we shouldn't be doing so. The question regarding the Northern Michigan Regional Chamber Alliance guiding principles, I, I put those on there just so you kinda have a better understanding of what they do. You know, the, the Alpena Area Chamber of Commerce, and I certainly don't speak for them, so I don't wanna, don't want to indicate something, you know, that their board's position is X, Y, or Z. I don't know that with any certainty. I know in general what they do, but, uh, I mean, their approach obviously has been business friendly. Our approach is business friendly. You know, we've got tax abatements, we've got, we've done everything we can in our power to not only try to help create business, but to try to help retain the businesses that we already have here. So certainly, uh, whether it be the mayor, whether it be another council member, whether it be, uh, city manager, anybody on behalf of the city that sat on that board, I can't see that there would be anything upfront that would create any problems for that. They have an agenda similar to our agenda. They want to create business in the area. We want to create business in the area, uh, so, once again, I don't see any conflict with that. So my opinion, uh, to be restated and to be clear, is that I don't see any problem with Mayor Walagora or, uh, the city manager for that matter sometime in the future sitting on that Alpena Area Chamber board with the proviso that if there is an actual conflict that arises during that, that membership, then obviously, uh, the member's duty or the city manager's duty would be to the city first, to the chamber second.
I have a quick question, Bill, and Matt might know better in any way. You say it's public, it says public sector seat, and then if you look at like the chambers board, it says City of Alpena, so I, I don't know, is that ambiguous or has that been clarified to you? Or how, are you representing us or all public sector, or do you know, or?
It was odd how that, and to be honest with you, um, I'm not really sure what the terminology means when it, where, and I don't recall now where I read that, that it said, that it said, um, City of Alpena. Where did you, where did we see that?
It's on the chambers.
It's on the chambers website. No, I knew I saw it somewhere, 'cause when it first, like I said, when it first came out, when the position first came out, it was just an email that said, um, that there was, that there was a position open, that there, well, there was actually three positions open. One was held by Ted Taylor. Um, would anybody be interested in getting on the city, on their board of directors for the Chamber of Commerce? And so I let it, I just kinda thought about it for, I think a couple of weeks went by or a week or so, and then I just sent an email to the chamber and said, oh, yeah, I'd be interested in that, and, um, then it went through their process. And then several weeks later, I got an email back saying, you know, you were accepted as, as a member of our board. Here's our next, I showed up at the meeting, um, and then, um, like I said, it was a couple of weeks that went by, and I said, you know, oh, I never let council know that, you know, I took this position, so I sent the email out to y'all saying that I took the position, so it really, it never really occurred to me that, that I would be representing the City of Alpena as we do here, or just the City of Alpena as a general member. So, um, I don't know if it, probably something I should clear up with the board is whether, whether, how they view me would be, I guess, more importantly, 'cause I certainly don't represent the council on their board.
Let's see, if Jackie's out there, can we ask her how she views it?
If you want to explain how that, how that membership works for-
Yeah, that's fine. None of our board members represent. We don't have specific industry representatives. We don't have a certain spot for manufacturing, a certain spot for public sector in our bylaws, anyway. We only have two positions in our bylaws that are strictly saved, I guess, for those positions. One we just added very recently would be for the CPB board, uh, so somebody from their board is on our board. And the other is for Target. When we created a new relationship, we agreed on certain positions that would be on both boards. Um, the public sector piece is not in our bylaw. We've always just felt like to be well-rounded, and because a certain percentage of our membership is public sector, we thought it would be nice to always have somebody from public sector, but it, it's not to say that Matt's representing public sector just to have a body from that, that portion of our membership. Just like when we, when we have people going off of our board, say we have a small business owner and CPA going off, we try and find somebody to replace them that, that is well-rounded for our board. So we would try and replace the CPA with somebody in the financial industry, whether it's a bank or CPA or whatever it would be. In a small business, we would try to do the same, if that helps clarify.
That's more inclusion than representation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, my review of their bylaws indicated the composition was nine members, and really it says that they'd be made up of business owners, managers, and other appropriate representatives of the business community. It did not specify a public sector member, uh, however, it didn't prohibit it either. But, uh, you know, I did view their website, and Matt's name is clearly listed as City of Alpena, so at least it's, it's presented as if he's sitting on there as the City of Alpena representative. I don't know how, any other way you could take that.
We can change that. We could put Matt without a title.
More and more insignificant every day, but it's all right.
And I, I mean, I don't, I don't say that to create any additional controversy about it, but I mean, I just, you know, when you, when you jump on there and you're looking and see, you know, somebody from Nemrock, somebody from Australia Island Lamp, uh, somebody, uh, Treaty Gray's on there, you know, it's, you know, Bay Athletic Club says Matt Walagora, City of Alpena, so I would assume, like many others, that he's representing the City of Alpena, and I don't really think he is, but there's certainly that perception that he may be. So, you know, obviously, you know, once again, I can't speak for the chamber and, and, you know, how their board is composed other than what their bylaws say. You know, it probably, from our perspective, I would like to see that it not say City of Alpena, but we don't have any authority to tell them that he is from the City of Alpena. I mean, he is the mayor of this, of the city, so, um, I think if you just said Mayor Matt Walagora, you'd convey the same thing. You would, you know, they would still see him as sitting on there as, as a City of Alpena representative, so.
Yeah, I don't-
Not sure if it said Matt Walagora, public sector, Walagora, a member enlarged, uh-
Panel processing, I mean, what-
Yeah.
The, the, my, my employer is a member of the Chamber of Commerce, panel processing, and, um, you know, and I sit at, at a certain level management there, so it, it doesn't matter. I, I, quite honestly, I thought it was a pretty good idea for someone, for someone to sit on that board. We are business friendly, they are business friendly. I think it would be a good, it was a good fit, so, but I don't wanna, I don't want to stir up a whole heap load of controversy that, uh, that's not necessary, so.
Yes, you know, my concern, and Bill made it pretty clear, and it's not imminent, conflict. I think that was pretty obvious. I don't think he made it real clear that it was a good idea. And maybe, you know, again, the creating appearance isn't the standard for it, but appearance is still appearance. I guess, you know, I would encourage you not to do it because I just think it looks bad. Okay, I mean, if he says it's not a conflict, it's not a conflict, but-
But what's the, explain the bad part about any one of us being on the Chamber of Commerce board? Any different than we being on the Target board or anything?
Well, the, the main thing being that the Congress and Jackie was in the paper just a couple of days ago. It said one of our goals is to continue to lobby legislation. You know, the local commerce works to lobby legislation, it's favorable to them as they should. The bigger group that they're part of, that's their main goal, is to lobby elected officials. So it just, to me, it looks bad to have an elected official on board whose goal is to lobby elected officials. So it's almost like they just would have your ear-
You know, that's what MML does as well.
For our benefit, for the cities.
What I would say, well, I guess, argumentatively, I guess, the Chamber of Commerce and the commerce arguing for better things for, for business owners would be, um, in our best interest as well, so.
I'd take the vast majority of the time, sure. Like if, you know, property, taxes, exemptions, the tax rates, any of those things, we're gonna have some disagreement on the future. You know, you don't need our approval, obviously, and I, I don't think it looks good to do that. I don't think it looks good or that it's a good idea to enter into a board where there's gonna be potential conflicts of interest, where there's a perception publicly that that's not a good marriage. Legally, technically, obviously, Bill says it's fine, and I guess it matters, comes down to whether it matters that that perception matters to you or not.
Nobody else stepped up for that, did they, but Matt?
There was, well, there was interest from the public schools, but they didn't have anybody who scheduled it at the time. And just from, from our perspective, this doesn't, we, we just want good people on our board. So from our perspective, none of this really matters. We have a conflict of interest policy on our end, and we follow it very closely, um, so we just want good people.
Yeah, I guess I, um, may care here. When, when did, did, did you request somebody? And when did you accept? But the timeline to me is-
The email came to us to make us aware on November's, it was either the, I think it was the 12th. I think it was the 12th, November 12th, and then, and then they went, the chamber went through their process. So it was right around in that timeline, so it was right before the holidays, I think, is when the, the first meeting I was-
So who knew to respond? That's my, that's really at the heart of what I, who on this, on this board knew about it to respond?
The three of us and-
I think it was Greg first and the board.
Greg knew, okay.
I assume the county, the township's got the same.
Sure.
I don't know, I would think so.
I, I think Jackie answered it. You solicited members of the county, township, uh, public schools.
Yes, all of our members who we would consider as part of the public sector got the same email on November 12th, yes.
Basically, when I forwarded it, it was because I felt that it wasn't appropriate for me as an interim to sit and, and offer myself if I had that interest simply because it may be just a very short duration, and I don't think that's, you know, you have what, three-year terms, four-year terms, whatever, that would be the hope that a person would be on for the full term. It would be unknown for, for me, and so that's why I did not consider that for myself.
And so I don't know that a city manager working for us wouldn't have the conflict of interest. Councilman Sexton didn't, you, you either didn't know that our city manager sat on that board or you didn't see a conflict of interest if it were a city manager rather than one of us that's elected, or?
Yeah, it's the verse as an elected official. Although now that we've talked about it, I would probably be less comfortable with that now as well.
I don't know. I don't see a conflict, but so if anybody, if you do, then let me know. I don't want everybody to sit here and be uncomfortable with me sitting on the board. I mean, I'm just sitting on the board.
I'm not at all, since Bill said that he finds no conflict in it. That was my first concern, and now that he's said that, um, something arose. I'm sure you're very intelligent enough to figure out.
Well, you're all well aware that I sit on the board, so if we're about to make any kind of decision elaborate about something, um-
I, I really don't have a problem with it.
I don't think it's a deal.
I, um, I should probably state my concern and also the fact that since the city attorney sees no direct conflict of interest, how on earth could I argue with that? I restate my preference that it would be the city manager, but certainly I have no problem after tonight that it is the mayor. My concern is that it was done without council approval. We spend some amount of time in January. You read the list of Susan will go to these meetings and Sam will go to these meetings, and if we're going to appoint city council members, including the mayor, to go to some meetings and not others, where's the consistency in that? So I, you know, I, my concern is that it was done without council approval, even though two of us shirked it.
Sure.
Do it or, or whatever, you know, we, you know, for one reason or another, we decided that it was not in our interest. So, you know, I'm okay with it, but my, my concern is that it was not a council appointment, that's all.
But in the end, it's, but we all understand that, that the board is completely outside of the city's realm. It's nearly be no different than me sitting on the, on the, what did you say, Jets football? Jets football, um, Boys and Girls Club, do they have a board? I don't know if the Boys and Girls Club has a board. If I were-
The Humane Society?
The Humane Society, it, I mean, we have, we may or may not have boards that are outside of this. I have them listed on my, actually, the only thing I have, I'm off of Junior Achievement. Well, Junior Achievement would be another one, that, I don't need your, I don't mean to, I don't mean to offend you, but I don't need your permission to join the Junior Achievement Board. I don't need your permission to, the council's permission to join the Boys and Girls Club, Humane Society. I don't think we want to, I don't, I don't personally want to get into that. I don't want to have every time, every time we get on a board, I mean, I'll certainly list it alongside a Booster Club and everything else on my conflict of interest downstairs, um, but I just, I just, if we've never had to have each other's, um, blessing to get on boards in all of the decades, and now-
So I think it was new that.
I don't know that.
We also never had this come up, where it's always been, if I was asked to be on the Boys Club board, I would ask you guys, knowing, well, okay, you're gonna say yes, but just have a common courtesy. This isn't a slam dunk like the Jets, or Bill wouldn't have eight pages. So, you know, I'd at least like to see added language that we don't, we don't have to prove it. I think, you know, Bill's right. If we get into approving Alpena Jets, that's a little silly, but I think any board we serve on has to at least come up, that we have to at least say, I'm interested in sitting on this board. You know, half the boards we've thrown out as examples, come ask us for money. You know, Humane Society asks us for money every year. You know, that's a difficult decision. If we sit on that board, it's gonna be harder, so, you know, I would like to see that, that language at least beefed up, that it's courtesy to bring it to council and say, I've been asked to sit on this board, or I'm interested in this board, is that okay? And everybody will say, okay, and move on, as opposed to finding out after, maybe there's a conflict on the road. So I don't think it's an approval so much as it is just, uh, maintaining transparency and, and letting people know where we're at, what we're doing.
And I think there's a, an order of magnitude, no offense to Jets football, between the Jets and the chamber. I think the chamber board would be one of the most important boards any of us could sit on. Uh, if we're gonna approve anything, that would be one.
And, you know, the, the opinion suggests that if council wishes, you know, if it's consent to council to consider that, my offense, I would be, section eight would probably be a good position to put it in, and it could state something along the lines of, uh, any council member who's approached in a, um, professional private capacity to sit on a, a board that's not on the City of Alpena's list of boards, shall bring that to city council. not on the City of Alpena's list of boards, shall bring that to city council's attention. And, and the other language that's already in there essentially covers it, which says, they can ask the city attorney for an advisory opinion interpreting the effect or application of the policy, or on questions directly related to the variety of their conduct in a particular situation. So you would bring it and say, okay, here's the situation, I just want to make sure everybody understands that I'm considering this, is there any problems? And I don't think problems in the sense that you vote that person off that, because essentially, none of you should be voting off what each of you does as a private citizen. But certainly, it should be looked at whether the participation on that board may have some effect on the city. And just so, you know, we're out there, so to speak, and, and figure out, hey, is this, is there an actual conflict? You know, there, there may be at the time an actual conflict that one of you as a, a member doesn't necessarily see right then, or something that you don't necessarily know, it might be something you share with the city manager, and the city manager might be able to say, well, wait a minute, we've got A, B, or C going on with this particular organization that you guys may not know of, I mean, you know, things go on behind the scenes sometimes as well, before they become public knowledge, and hateful wanting you to jump onto a board that there's something going on with the city at that particular time that, that you're not aware of. Now, obviously, staff role is to keep you guys informed of all those things, but you're not informed of everything every second of the day, I mean, things transpire quickly sometimes, so it would make sense to maybe at least have the policy reflected as brought to council's attention, just so that, you know, you don't find out a week or two later that somebody's sitting on a board that, that, you know, you may have wanted to express an opinion to them on as to their participation on it. And I guess this, this part here is my personal opinion, and I, and I don't, I don't do this with any, certainly don't want to create any conflict by saying this either, but when this was first presented to me, I didn't have all the information either. And I think in fairness to Matt, and I'm not trying to stick up for Matt, so don't, I, I hope nobody misinterprets that, but in fairness to Matt, I wasn't even aware that, that an email had come in to the city requesting somebody consider being placed on the board, I wasn't aware of that, I didn't know that Greg had emailed council and asked any of you about your consideration for it. So I think, under the circumstances and fairness to that process, I, I think any one of you could have been in the same position. Sam might have got the email and did the same thing, might have contacted Jackie directly and, you know, a month later, may have been told, okay, we're considering your nomination. He may have brought it right back to council's attention, he may have thought a little different of it, but I certainly don't think there was any intention that we get placed on a board to create a conflict for anybody, I just, I just don't see that, I just don't see it having played out that way. But that might be why it's prudent to have a policy that calls for that, calls for that disclosure to council, so that we don't get ourselves in that position in the future.
How long is, how long would you be on the board?
Three years.
Three years? Okay. So then, at that point, would we, whoever sits on council, would we want to ensure that somebody else was on the Chamber board?
You know, Jackie could probably speak this better than me, but that, that position isn't really reserved for anybody from the City of Alpena.
And yet, we always get somebody on?
No, no, we don't.
No, and the memo kind of laid out, we kind of searched, sorry, I didn't search, but Karen searched specifically to find out how Thad got on that, and how, and whether it was ever brought to the board's attention, to council's attention, and there was some thought that maybe he had shared it in informational items, or maybe it had come before council, but we couldn't find anything as to how he got put on there. He orally told Karen that essentially, the, the board, or their, or, I guess Jackie probably contacted him and asked him about his interest in serving on it, and he told him he would, would be interested in it, and voted him in, so it's kind of similar to what Matt did.
I guess, it seemed the same. Like I said, yeah, I just, you know, I don't know, no, it was unfortunate, now, looking back, obviously, it was a bit unfortunate for how it, I don't know.
Probably the Thad being appointed by the board, at least since I've been here fifteen years, there has never been anybody from the city on the Chamber board that I'm aware of.
Not that I know of.
Yeah, it was, you know, I mean, he was the first time that, at least during my period of time there, and I don't know about anybody before that, and I would have went before Jackie's time as well, so, so it is not, it is not a dedicated seat. Ultimately, even if, if you as a council say, yes, we would like the mayor to sit on it, or one of the others, it's ultimately still the chambers, they have the authority to decide who is on their board. It isn't like somewhere, as an example, Thunder Bay Transportation, that I sit on, the city has a seat on that board, so you appoint somebody to that, that's not the case here. It is the chamber who goes out and, and looks for nomination.
Well, our membership submits nominations to us, or we, they don't really, I mean, in a perfect world, they'd submit them, but, so we seek nominations, and then the whole membership votes on it. So if the city said, yeah, we'll have so-and-so be nominated, our membership might not vote that person in. So it's not up to the state to appoint someone for a board.
It isn't, it's very different than many of these others that we have.
Well, I don't have a problem if you, if council wants to take Bill's recommendation and, and add that to Section 8, is, I guess in my opinion, as long as it's a bring it to the council's attention statement, rather than a, rather than an approval type statement, because I just think...
I think we'd be on a slippery slope if we said somebody couldn't sit on there without approval, because there's nothing that I find that would allow council to restrict any of you, any, one of you individually from sitting on a board such as that, when there is no actual conflict.
But we add it just to bring it to our attention, and that's going to save us from, nine times out of ten, it's not going to be an issue, but as long as we're aware that it's going to avoid any potentially difficult situation.
Yeah, I mean, I think something is, I guess my opinion would be to, maybe it should be brought to the city manager's attention first, city manager would share it with respective council members individually, and if any of you requested that it be on the agenda for some formal discussion, then it could get on that way, but if, for instance, the Alpena Jets, if you were advised that, Susan advised, I've been approached by the Alpena Jets Football Club, and they want me to sit on their secretary treasurer, ran it by Greg, Greg said, yeah, it's up to Bill, no conflict, sent it out and emailed everybody, everybody said, yeah, I can't see any, you know, there wouldn't, wouldn't be anything more than that, but there'd be, you know, there'd be a paper trail that followed it, and it certainly wouldn't be something that popped up, and nobody knew about it, so to speak.
Technically, still bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, absolutely. And then if it, you know, if it, if, you know, if a member said, or if, you know, if something, if there was something at that point in time that needed to be disclosed as an actual conflict, then it could be an agenda item, you could, in a sense, at that point, say, hey, there is an actual conflict here, and, and I think at that point in time, the member would have a duty to not have themselves placed on that board if they knew right up front going in that there's an actual conflict. I don't think it would be appropriate to, I mean, I think you would be violating council Policy 50 if you did that.
Well, I would move to refer to staff to bring us some amended, amended language to...
Second.
Yes.
Wallagora?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Hi.
Okay, we have transfer property from the City of Alpena to Habitat for Humanity. It's actually sale, more than just a transfer. They're going to pay the city $5,000 for that lot. What happened was, back in 2006, there was residents on that lot that burned, this lot's located between North Second and Fort Avenue, and it's a full-size city lot. So that house burned, for whatever reason, the insurance company didn't pay off on the claim, so as usual, the city inherits a burned-out house. The city attorney, and I don't remember if it was Bill or Keith back then, we went to Circuit Court, the owner did take the property down, so we didn't get permission from Circuit Court to raise the property, we put out the bids, followed all the legalese, we ended up spending about $7,000, $7,500, and got the house down, then we get to place a lien on the property as a tax lien. Just this year, I found out those tax liens don't mean anything, as far as the city getting the money back. There's no guarantee, when it goes to tax sale, they don't have to pay the lien. If somebody buys the property, wants to make sure they have an absolute pristine title on it, then they may be interested in paying the lien off. If they don't, if they're just adding it to their house to have more property, something, they don't have a mortgage, they might, may not be as concerned about getting that taken care of, so. And I just found this out by talking with the county, because someone was interested in picking up that lot. They were, you know, wanting to know about the liens on it, and that's when I conversed with the city attorney, and we realized, hey, I guess these liens aren't as good as we thought they were. So my mind switched to, how can we recoup some of our funds that we've expended? And that's what happened. I know some of the people on Habitat, we sit on the Vision 2020, the city still is involved in that program, and I said, how much did you guys pay for the lot? When I was president of Habitat, we bought the lot that, the Long Lake supermarket, the little grocery store that burned down on North Long Lake Avenue, we bought that for about $1,500. Somebody bought that when it was a tax sale, same way. And so, they said they paid $5,000, so when I said that, I approached the owner, inquired about having a quick lien deed to the city in return for letting that lien go, because the liens on the property could also be said that it's on him personally, but they're not, they're destitute, to say the least, they're not going to pay the lien off, and it was a chance to get some money, and so I checked with Bill, and we did violate the $2 per capita, to where something has to go to council for sale, because that would be up in the $20,000, I mean, the property certainly isn't worth $20,000. And we talked about, what if we did just try to do a bid on it, we might wind up with $1,500, which is above what one of those lots is worth on a good day. So this way, the city recouped, you know, $5,000 of money that was spent years ago. There's going to be a house built on it by Habitat that will hopefully generate some taxable income in the near future, so it seems like a win-win situation. If that, if that wouldn't have been the case, I wouldn't have wasted my time and tried to get the quick lien deed turned over to us, I would have just let it go through the tax system, as so often has happened to us before, and you just, you just lose them. In the future, moving forward, we're on a program that any time a structure is damaged 50% beyond its value, which, with values of our properties now, and you get a good fire on the inside, you're there. The insurance company, prior to making a payout, are required to deposit money with the city in an escrow account that Karen set up, and that $78 or $7900 is used to degrade the expense in the event that people take the money and walk away and we're stuck with the house, and that's, and that's why you see houses sitting around burning up so long in town, you know, we don't have the money to just run and tear them down, and so, the building department were diligently trying to come to some type of resolution that doesn't cost the city so much money, and that's what happened on this one.
Excellent.
No question. Can I just, can I just say one thing about Besser Company, what you were talking about in that advertisement, while I'm up here? And, you know, we all sat and talked with Frank about what we liked about Alpena itself, and I understand that, you know, Besser Company may not right now, today, be the big employer it was back in the 60s and 15s, but they are right now, today, the world headquarters for Besser Concrete Block Technology. And concrete block technology, and the fire back in the day, National Jifts, Milling and Cement Company, those are the things that built Alpena after the trees were all cut down. When the lumbering was done, and the dams were built, we had cement, and we had the largest self-producing cement plant in the world, and there was only one of those in the world at the time, too, and then we had the world headquarters for block, so, you know, me and a lot of other people in Alpena take a very optimistic approach, that just because there's a big empty building sitting there right now, you know, I fully expect that with the likes of Jim Clarish and help from people in the city going out looking for these, you know, there's going to be 300 people working on it, so. I think that it's the opportunity for that right manager to come in, here are the tools you got to work with, and granted, that building may be sitting quite empty, but it's quite locker, it's spacious.
Ryan, will you take it down?
We need approval for this transfer.
So?
Wallagora?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Hi.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
Communications and petitions, we have Jackie Krawcheck, executive director of Alpena Area Chamber of Commerce, for the presentation of the Alpena College Access Network grant application.
Well, I'm Jackie from the Chamber. So I am, I'm here really for a signature on a grant application we're working on. I am chairing a committee, which is not a conflict of interest, for the, there's the Michigan College Access Network, which has a goal of having a 60% college educational attainment level by 2025. And under the MCAN, Michigan College Access Network, there's local college access networks, which for Alpena is the Alpena College Access Network. And, and to write this grant, what, what they want is, instead of letters of support or resolution from the city and the county and whoever else, they want this community agenda signed. And so that's really what I'm here today, is to ask for a signature from Matt for the community agenda, and to kill two birds with one stone, Susan, you're also on this, with the White House.
I apologize.
So, no, that's okay. So really, it's, it's a committee, they have already been through, I was not on the committee when they were, already went through the first phase of the grant, so they, they did a planning grant, which they received, and now they're on the startup grant, they're asking for $50,000 from MCAN with matching funds to hire somebody to help create a college-going culture, I guess. And so, and our goal would be the same, is by 2025, to have 60% of the population here to have higher degree of educational attainment. So, questions?
That's awesome, right now, Memphis, Michigan has the lowest number of bachelor degrees in the area of our state, so, I think it's 30 something, and maybe not even that, so, you're, that group can get it all the way up to 60. That makes us more attractive to employers, because they don't have to get trained, so that's, certainly support that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we just need an action to allow me to do that?
Yeah.
So I have a motion.
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Hi.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Hi.
We have unfinished business, this will be the second reading of ordinance number 13-423, ordinance to modify and revise ordinance 392, Section 4.8, public off-premise advertising signs and directional signs.
Consistent with council policy, this will not be ready yet. I think council's aware that this is related to tourist oriented directional signs, so we just need a vote, either yea or nay.
Move the approval of ordinance number 13-423, second man.
Yes.
Pollak?
Hi.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Hi.
Tyler?
Yes.
In business, council meetings on the internet. Steve Schultz from the Energy Department.
City staff had previously investigated and began to implement the process of recording and publishing city council meetings on the internet, in an effort to allow more residents to see the meetings beyond those who have access to the public channel, public cable channel broadcast. At that time, council did give permit, give direction to the program and continue the contract with Alpena Marketplace Productions and recorded and aired the meetings. In discussions with Penny Pellerin, she had indicated lately that a few residents have asked if she could upload the city council meetings to her YouTube channel so that people could watch them on their own schedule and from anywhere. And as the contract sits, she doesn't, she doesn't have authorization to do, do this, but she suggested that we could upload one meeting to her channel and monitor the views and determine if this is something we wanted to be included in. If the test is successful, the city could create its own YouTube channel, and Alpena Marketplace Productions would provide the file in the correct format to upload after each meeting. That way, everyone could access this over the internet, along with viewing on the cable channel. And so at this time, I would request council's approval to upload this meeting tonight to the Alpena Marketplace Productions YouTube channel, and we'll issue a, a news release and place it on the city's website, and monitor the views for a two-to-three week period. Following a successful test, staff would create the City of Alpena YouTube channel and begin to post the city council meeting videos and archive them, so people would have access to several meetings in the past they could, they could look at. I talked a little bit with Penny tonight, and because of the way the contract works and the, and the way she prepares the video for the... for the TV broadcast, she has to have an actual, there's an extra step to do something for a YouTube channel. So she would look at about twenty-five dollars extra per meeting. So it'd be about six hundred dollars a year extra to do this. And she would just provide it right to us and we would upload it right to the YouTube channel. And I guess at this time, we would just look for a trial and I anticipate that it's going to be successful. And I would anticipate just pushing in with it and not coming back to council for council approval telling to go ahead and follow through with it if we do have a successful test.
I think the results from your test might be a bit skewed anyhow. For just one meeting, everybody might be all excited and give you like some freakish number. I have some concerns about, I don't understand what a YouTube channel is. I mean, I know what YouTube is. I don't know what a YouTube channel is.
It's something that just kind of started up very recently. People create their own channels and so you have, it's easier, it makes it easier to find all the same video. You go to the City of Alpena channel and you would see all the videos that we posted. You wouldn't have to go to a link that just contains the one council meeting for that time. You could go to the City of Alpena's channel and see all those videos.
It's more like a website.
Kind of.
It would be just a link from our website. My other concern is what, where can that video go and what can be done with it as far as manipulation? And the next thing you know, my head's on a donkey or something, you know? Or there's some glitch in YouTube. I don't know if there's copyrights on that or if it's lockable.
Well, it gets lockable to a point. There's always, they call them YouTube downloaders, somebody can actually download their video. And if they're pretty good at it, they could do some manipulating or whatever. But it's not, it'd be the same thing as if you were to tune into the cable channel, record it on DVD. You could do the same thing with it. There's the same potential.
It's just a matter of whatever you have. Because I did, I don't know if anybody else did, but as soon as I saw this, I went to YouTube over the weekend and just looked to see, you know? And there are actually several city councils throughout the country that have, that either have all or someone has grabbed part of their YouTube and didn't, I wouldn't necessarily say that they manipulated it, but they used it to their advantage, let's just say. If, because that's the only thing I could see and I keep looking over at you because you might be involved in this one day. If someone has used our video of city council to an advantage that gives either the city or city council or any one of us in an incredibly bad light, would there be, would Bill be able to follow up on some kind of a copyright infringement that, hey, you, or is there anything? Or is it just all out there, as soon as you put it on there, it's a free-for-all? And we might put ourselves in a position we don't want to be in. It's not about, and you know, and I'll be clear, I don't know if it needs to be said or if I got to say it, that it's not about not, it's not about not being accessible to the public. It's, for me right now, it's about looking to the future and seeing what could potentially happen. So I.
My, this is just off, you know, not as asking for an informal opinion, but my off-the-cuff answer is I think once you place on YouTube, you lose any proprietary interest. And that doesn't give somebody a right to essentially libel you or slander you by, you know, putting you in a negative light. You know, that's something that not only the city, but each one of you individually may have some action against whoever did that. But I think once it's on YouTube, it's there and there's not much you can do to stop people from grabbing it and doing whatever they're going to do with it. And, you know, that person might be in California or the Bahamas or Russia or wherever they're at. So, you know, I think that's a legitimate concern that that can happen. And I don't think, I don't think there's any copyright infringement for somebody, I think you lose that ability for that once you place on YouTube. I don't know if Steve has got anything different to say on that, but I'm pretty sure that's the way it works. I guess I mean, we're putting it out there and you know what YouTube is. Like I said, it doesn't, once again, it doesn't give them a right to cast you in a negative light, but it's on there and, you know, it can be manipulated.
Is that any different?
TV station, when it goes on, somebody could record it. You've even seen that they'll take cuts out of an interview or out of anything else to use it to manipulate either for or against that person. Anything probably can be manipulated that's. Either TV or whatever you do it on.
Right. And I understand that anything can, we've been videoing or copying TV shows, I guess, for decades now. You know, and the other, so, you know, that's something to consider if council wants to just consider that. Another thing is if you haven't, if you haven't checked it out or gone on and looked at it, something that YouTube does also provide is comment section underneath. So you have video, you know, let's say our council meeting or anything or something, and then you have a comment section that we have locally seen what can happen with a comment section on the internet. Can go fiercely out of control and, you know, I don't know, in my opinion, I'll just keep my opinion to myself. So that's something else that we might want to consider before we go posting it. Because I don't know if on YouTube, if it's the same as anywhere else that you can see a comment that's derogatory or offensive or whatever, can someone take that off? And if someone can take that off, now do we have to have somebody in Steve's office sitting there pulling terrible things off our, you know, our YouTube, we're calling it our YouTube channel or whatever. But stuff like that can get incredibly offensive and out of control. And when you have it on TV, you just, people have the opportunity to watch it. It's not so.
I would anticipate turning the comment section off and not having that.
So that is an option that can be done?
I do believe it is.
Okay.
I can certainly check on that, make sure that it is.
If it gets ugly, I don't care what kind of side it is. I'll go on like my sports team and then there's just people on there trashing everything. Why are you even on there? But I think you can turn it off. I understand that concern. And I guess on the positive side is that this reaches people that don't have access to it now. I'm sure that was probably the idea that, I have DirecTV, I've never seen a meeting. You know, I don't really want to either, but, you know, but if you have DirecTV or Dish or you're just going with laptops and stuff, maybe it will open up a younger market, I don't know. But I guess maybe with Matt's concerns, we should just try it once and then see if that makes council feel about it.
I think Marissa has information.
I just wanted to let everybody know that we upload all of our stories on YouTube. So some of the past council stories have been uploaded. And we have a comment section and we have never had an issue, to my knowledge, since I've been here and a few months before.
There you go. We're there. I didn't do my search wide enough. Somewhere else, thank you.
Well, that's, I mean, I could do a test and come back up the report if you'd like, you know? If you prefer it that way, I could certainly do that and we can see where it goes.
Yeah, I don't know if it warrants a report because any one of us could get on there and take a look and see what you're seeing.
Need some official comment on that?
I think so. I think you'd probably need action on that.
Yeah, he's asking for an upload for tonight's on YouTube. And then if it, in a two to three week trial, if you like it, then it's a YouTube, City of Alpena YouTube channel.
Wouldn't it be the expenditure funds too?
I would not want to do that upfront. I think we should see the test before.
I mean, we allow the MIS department to run a trial test and report back.
And I don't think, just further discussion before we vote, I don't think it would be outside of our realm to pay the twenty-five dollars. I mean, we've been told that it costs twenty-five dollars to do so. I don't expect anybody to do that for free. So we just do that as a one-time and then just bring it back and, bring it back and it'll be like almost like instantaneous. It'll be up in a couple of days. You think this'll take a while?
As soon as I can get it up.
But within a week or?
Hopefully tomorrow or at least by Wednesday.
Oh, all right. Well, then why don't we just put it back on the agenda for a quick discussion in March or something? If you want. Don't do that. Because then we'd have to discuss.
Well, he was going to do two or three.
See now, you want to behave differently now.
You want to do a few of them?
For YouTube audience.
Steve, you want to do a few of them?
We could, sure.
Let's just go until whenever.
Why don't you report back?
I'll report back. First meeting in April. I'm just going to consider three, the next three meetings.
Yeah, March will be busy.
What's going on?
All right, there's a motion, go ahead, sir.
Pollak?
Aye.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Ayler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Steve?
All right. In 2012, the city participated in a branding process to develop ideas and direction for the community, decide what makes us unique and learn to promote the one feature that sets us apart. After thirteen months, the idea of the Alpena area being a sanctuary was the chosen feature. The many different meanings of the word are the foundation from which to build. The committee in charge of the implementation of the branding effort is the branding leadership team. They will assist the community in determining the appropriate times to employ new ideas, advertisements and events to promote Alpena. Part of this branding process was the development of a new logo for the community. This logo we use community-wide and have subtle changes to differentiate it between the entities using it. We have recently received notification that the new logo has been trademarked and we are encouraged to use it whenever possible. Staff has discussed the usage of the new logo and has formulated an introduction plan that includes two phases. Initially, the logo would be changed on all digital means of communication. For instance, the website, the information board at city hall, news releases. Employees would be encouraged to use it in their signature and their email and any other media that is not already pre-printed. The second phase would be to establish the new logo on pre-printed media such as business cards, letterhead, notepads, uniforms, vehicles, street banners, signage, et cetera. With the guidance of the brand identity style guide that we received, developed by the branding consultant Destination Development International, the city staff will design a new business card to be used by city employees. Some departments have already adopted printing existing letterhead in-house. Others continue to use the current pre-printed supply. With council's approval to do so, the staff could design a new letterhead template to differentiate it per department and phase it in as the new standard. This would eliminate reordering of pre-printed media. And lastly, clothing, vehicles, banners and other non-consumable items would receive the new logo when we reorder. Recently, the building department was in need of jackets and the city manager approved the use of the logo as a test. Staff is pleased with the look and will continue to use with council approval. And I have one of the jackets here. And you can see it, but it looks, looks pretty sharp. It looks nice now that it's actually on something instead of just a bunch of drawings that we've seen. So. At a time when the VLT determines a third phase would include the production of advertisement media, which may include hats, water bottles, coffee cups, shirts, blankets, et cetera. This would most likely be a cooperative effort between the city, DDA, Chamber and CDB at some point in the future. At this time, I'm requesting council approval to begin using the new logo, initially on digital and other in-house printed media, and eventually transition it to business cards, uniforms, vehicles and banners. Staff will not order new pre-printed items until existing supplies are exhausted. And I'll attach examples of the new logo and how it may be utilized in the future. And I've got just a quick PowerPoint, it mirrors the attachment. But it kind of gives it in a bigger scale so you can see it. The one on the upper left is the sanctuary logo, which is more of an advertisement piece, more of kind of the community-wide. And these, the two on the right here are the official city. That's what they designed as the city hall, the City of Alpena logo, moving the little wave to the outside, putting the city on there, identifying that. And they identified actual colors, they gave us the color schemes and everything and told us, you know, you use the green with the blue and then as a secondary piece, you could use the purple with the orange. And those look really nice on the banner, we need to see those later. They designed city letterhead for us, the city business cards, envelopes. And these are the banners, they use the orange and the purple here as well. But then they kind of superposed them on some pictures of downtown already. I think those look sharp. And this is just an example of some of the advertisements we might see in the future, some cards and some flyers, bookmarks. And this would be, this would be on into the future when we get this logo up and running and everybody starts to really recognize it as part of the community, we would include it on different clothing and hats and things like that. This, I believe, would be more of a partnership from the city with the Chamber, CDB, and things like that. This wouldn't be probably spirited by the city, but we would definitely be involved because it's still that logo, it's that community. And then we've got the signage on in the future when we need to replace signs. This is kind of a bigger ticket item, but, you know, these would be, these would look really nice. We would look at incorporating it onto our bypass signage, things like that, so.
The more I see that, the more I like it. I like the sanctuary, the Great Lakes thing, I think that works really well. We allow Steve to start using the logo.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Ayler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. You doing a hot mix also?
Got twenty-five minutes.
All right, our last item, contract renewal for hot mixed asphalt patching program for 2013.
Pretty straightforward. Our contract that we e-shore two years ago, three years ago, and they did have a renewal option on our one-year extension, both parties put together prices. They agreed to extend the same unit prices from last year to this year. They held them throughout the life of the contract. It's my recommendation to city agenda, city council approve the renewal of the 2012 hot mixed asphalt patching program with e-shore asphalt paving for the same unit prices as utilized in 2012.
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
Think they could throw in, kind of patch that up or if this is made a little better?
Where are we?
That crater?
That's our DPW, we'll get it in a cold patch.
I've just had a million people ask.
But this is strictly the permanent patch contract, but we will, and we knew with this weather, it's changing, it's going to settle, it's going to compact. And so we know we're going to have to be back in there on a regular basis maintaining that.
I know, I just started throwing in some trouble. I had a lot of people ask.
So this isn't who provides our asphalt for the DPW that go out and do?
We buy that separately, we buy the cold patch separately, we buy that usually monthly, fifty or sixty tons at a time through God, did purchase.
And because that was brought up and it's going to be on YouTube now.
We've done this before, haven't we, without sending it out for bid every year?
Well, we bid it out, I think it was two years ago, it was a two-year contract. Then within that contract language, we did allow for a one-year renewal of that contract if, well, parties can agree something. This is in line with our purchase also.
I move we renew the contract for hot mixed asphalt.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Ayler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Aye.
Sexton?
Yes.
Before you go, can I adjourn? Just a reminder, Wednesday is our joint meeting with planning commission and council on the UFCIP. And it'll be here at, is it six-thirty, I believe it was, for Wednesday?
Will be adjourned at close session.
Ayler?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Aye.
Walagora?
Aye.
You are watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, eight p.m. to ten p.m. daily. Visit us often on the web at wwwallaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions. And of course, we have our updated schedule there. Or feel free to call us at three five four two two nine five.